I am really missing all my reports at home. Those are really important. Okay, I'd like to ask everybody to please stand and recite what the agenda is.
I am the President of the United States of America. I am the President of the Republic, and I am the President of the Constitution. I have the right to do this, and I have the right to protest.
All right, welcome everybody. I prompt you tonight in this hot, smoky evening. We should very shortly begin. It's only the United States of America. Okay. Can I ask for a roll call?
Steven, Arthur.
Here.
Jim Batson.
Here.
Kelly Collie.
Here.
Pat Currie.
Here.
Karen Lunsford.
Here.
Ellen Maurer.
Here.
And Graff sir.
Here. Okay, so everyone is present this evening. Let's quickly go through the agenda. We have some staff recognition tonight, which we look forward to. We will talk about the opening school activities. We'll do those specific presidents report. We have two new school board recommendations, so we welcome them. And we'll get their reports on following the activities for the first week. Superintendent's report, we'll open it up for public comment if anybody would like to speak. We'll approve the consent vote agenda, have updates from program and personnel, facilities and finance. Is there a property update that you may update?
Just a brief.
Brief.
Okay, brief.
So we update, update from SEDOL, update from SEDOL, and update from all the facilities and school boards, and that's wrapped up. Right? It's clocking soon, and I'm sure everyone will be staying very focused. We're saving on the. Okay, staff recognition.
Okay, I'm pleased tonight to let the board know that the annual publications and electronic media awards contest sponsored by the National School Public Relations Association, or NSPR, is open to all public or private schools or districts. This year District 128 was named an Award of Excellence winner in the electronic marketing materials category for the district's mobile application, D128 Mobile. There were 894 entries in this year's contest representing communication works from schools and school districts in the United States, Canada, and the United States Department of Defense dependent schools worldwide. Of the 135 electronic media communication entries, only 15 received Awards of Excellence. Mick Torres and Mary Todrick were notified of the award prior to the annual NSPR conference in San Diego where they presented on the District 128 mobile app. All NSPR awards were on display at the conference. And I'm happy to say tonight that we have something to give Mary and Mick, so if they will come up front here, Pat and I will give them a very nice plaque, and we will all recognize their outstanding achievement on behalf of the district. Great job, guys. Mary or Mick, you want to make any comments about the app or your presentation, anything that's gone along with that? We're certainly, again, a technology meeting at the high school level, so if you'd like to make some comments.
Well, we definitely were ahead of the curve on doing a mobile app, and like I said, there were only two apps in the country that were working. So we were fortunate to be able to present, and we had a full house for our presentation. A lot of districts wanting to do what we're doing, so we were very proud to represent the district. Anything else?
Yeah, we're going to meet this Thursday on the mobile app. This is an ongoing application for us. I think we're only beginning to, I think, unfold what this will do for us over the years, so it's really just a start. It's a starting point. It's exciting to look forward and see how this app can really serve the students very dearly.
Any idea how many, what company downloads?
Yeah, I was just going to say, we're still averaging about eight to 10 new users a day. We got about...
We did 99.
We have about 650 Android users and about 1600 iOS.
Oh, one.
So we're hoping with a few new local locals that'll be coming out, we want to make it something that every parent has to have.
That's great. These are all in the district?
No, no, we have users all over the world.
Very good. Great job, thanks again.
Good job. Educational presentation, opening school activities.
Well, as Pat alluded to earlier, and most of you are aware, particularly the students are aware, that we're back at school. And we think that's a good thing, we hope you do too. I just want to make a couple opening comments, and then I'm going to allow Ellen and Marina to talk about their opening days, but I want to compliment our staff again for their work throughout the summer. We have staff members who are doing professional development in the district. We have staff members who are taking coursework in their content area and other areas, and we're diligently to get ready for the opening of school. And for me as a superintendent, a former high school principal and a teacher, it's so exciting to see the staff start to come back and some numbers, and the enthusiasm and excitement that they have about the opening of school and getting ready for their students to come back. And then when the students come into two buildings, it's just really a rush to see how excited the kids are and the adults are to be together again and to be starting the school year in the extracurricular activities in the classroom as you walk between the buildings. And as you know, we think we just have the best students on the face of the planet, so and they're matched by the best staff on the face of the planet. So it was a great opening of school. And the way it works here, there are several lead-up activities that we do with new staff who go through some training and welcome to the district. Then we have our two building opening days, and then the second day we have a district opening day. And it's only one of two times the entire school year our entire team is together, everyone, administrators, teachers, support staff in the district. And so that's always real nice as well. So without further ado, we'll let Ellen and Marina talk a little bit about their opening days, and then we'll move on.
We just, like Curtis said, we had a great start to the school year. It was very fun, very enthusiastic. On our opening day, we got a lot of fun with our staff doing some silly videos that we kind of have a, it's just kind of a past practice type thing. But kind of different over the last four years, kind of what's new is just that we've had a bigger increase in our hires for this school year. We actually, over the last three, four years, haven't hired very many certified teachers at all, and we have 10 new certified staff members and seven new instructional aides. And some of that was retirement and some, a couple of people moving on. But the good news with our instructional aides is the reason why we had so many openings is many of our instructional aides actually secured teaching positions. So, you know, a lot of times this is a great training ground for them, and it was nice for them to move on and get a certified teaching job, which is great. Probably one of our new programs this year that was a highlight of our opening day is we now are heading into literacy coaching, and Ellen Macias and Amy Christian are doing a really good job. They were trained all last year, but they're going to be kind of leading a new program for us, kind of working with our Common Core and our Big Four framework as we get ready for the new part assessment. So they already had a program for opening day for all staff, and then for our principals' cabinet today, they did a short program for us today also. So we're really excited about the literacy coaching. Libertyville's been doing this program for a couple of years now, so it's great to be partnered with them on this. And then just the last thing is we can kind of look at our enrollment, and for the last couple of years, we've kind of stayed kind of stable. We had a little increase last year, but we actually had enrolled 50 new students over the summertime, which is a little on the high. We usually arrange, we're usually around 30 to 40 new students in the summertime, and then we had 28 students that did not return to us. So we have an increase, we're up 22 students at Vernon Hills. We were at 1,325 last year, and now we're inching up on 1,350. So we increased our students by about 22. So that's my short report. It's been, it was a great opening, just, it's just so fun to see the kids come back and be excited. It's a little bit quiet, it's too quiet around the end of July, and once all the teachers start coming back and the kids come back, it's just a lot of high energy, so nice.
Our theme this year for the teachers coming in was School of Rock, so we had a rock and roll theme to all our announcements and all our presentations. We had a lot of energy entering the school on Wednesday, and our challenge is to keep that moving in a positive direction. One of the really great things at LHS, I think, is Link Crew, our freshman orientation program, and they spent hours training the students as usual. But one of the really cool things that occurred is this is the first year that the Link Crew leaders have actually gone through Link Crew as a freshman. So Mrs. Ulix was telling me what a different dynamic that was and how excited they were to offer something that had been so special to them, to freshmen. So I think about that was really cool. To piggyback on what you said, Ellen, we had quite a few new teachers, and I touched base with them at the end of the first couple of days in our class, and Rita came over and talked with them, a welcome. But I touched base after a day or so to see how they were doing, and to the letter, they were already feeling very fortunate to be in a school district like this. One of the teachers we shared between the buildings said, "Man, it was the rain, and I didn't see what the bomb was going to ring, and these were always ringing." I told them, "Talk to each other for three minutes." So they're feeling really fortunate to be in an environment where you send us kids who really want to learn. So that's my gift to share this.
And Pat was able to join us, as he always does with our new teachers and on opening day, so Pat, I don't know if you want to make any comments?
I would just, I would share the, I mean, the enthusiasm and welcoming the new staff and teachers, and then the first day in the auditorium and really kicking the school year off is always a refreshing time of the year. And, you know, we did, we sort of reinforced for all the new people that, you know, they did a great job getting here, but that's really just the beginning, and we have very high expectations, and yet they're very lucky to have, you know, building staff and administration board and really parents in the community that are just incredibly supportive. So it was a very, very wonderful way to spend a couple mornings. And I also had an interesting experience at home recently, invited a friend over for a nice quiet evening on the patio. Turned out there was a football party next door. I think most of the Vernon Hills football team was next door, but I tell you, what a great group of kids, just enjoying a nice quiet evening in a neighbor's backyard, and you just kind of look at it and say, wow, if all communities had, you know, groups of kids like this and football teams like this, wouldn't we all be, you know, in a better place? It's a wonderful group of kids to enjoy having a good time next door, so that was a great kickoff to the year too. It's great to see them doing some team building in somebody's backyard. We expect big things on the football field too. Okay, so congratulations, everybody. Thanks for all your hard work. Anything else on that? Okay. All right, actually, I'll do the budget now, the president's reporting. You know, before we approve the budget, I just wanted to make a few comments for the public to understand. This is a project we've been working on all summer. We had several committee meetings to discuss the budget this year, and in total, our budget is going to go up about 3.4% next year. That includes a number of things really driving that increase, including our current teacher contract and a number of things that are tied directly to our district strategic plans, including diversifying, expanding, and upgrading our technology to enhance learning and teaching and communication. It also includes considerable spending for capital projects. We still see the capital building environment as being quite favorable, and so we want to take advantage of that and continue to repair and upgrade some of the infrastructure that we have between the two school buildings. So we have a number of important capital projects in this year's budget. It's also important to know that a lot of these large-scale technology and capital projects actually take more than a year to complete. A lot of times the expenses are started in one year and concluded in another, but we have included the money for those projects in this year's budget. And then, you know, last but not least, there's a lot of uncertainty. Some of you may have read recently that there's a lot of uncertainty primarily in Illinois and also in federal government with respect to school funding. So we've done the best that we can, not knowing where a lot of things will go on the pension issue and other unfunded mandates that we often have to deal with. We've done the best we can to contingency plan for some of the unexpected things that might also happen during the school year, so that was also included in the budget. So I think the budget's conservative, I think it's a good one. I'll also highlight that this is the second year in a row that we did not include in our budget all of the revenue that we could have per the state laws. Last year, we abated about $2 million, which was essentially most of the increase that we could have captured per state law. This year, we'll actually abate $4 million to taxpayers, also essentially abating back the full amount of the increase that we could have actually captured per the CPI and other indices that the state permits. So we continue to frankly try to, or continue to be very grateful to all of our taxpayers for all of the great support that they provide us. We certainly hope that we continue to provide the kind of product and the kind of schools that the people in this community deserve and expect. And we've also, at the same time, I think, tried to be good stewards of the taxpayers' money, and we can reassure you that we'll continue to do that going forward. We remain in very good and very solid financial shape, and for that, we're all very grateful. Okay? So we will approve the budget later this evening. All right, superintendent's report.
Students.
Oh, student report, sorry.
Hi, I'm Grace Ferillo. I'm Vernon Hills's student rep. I think the biggest thing I want to say is, I never really knew what it meant to like come full circle until senior year started. I was, got to be a freshman tour guide, and I was in the skit presented to the freshmen, and I remember like what a big deal that was for me, and it was such an incredible experience to be the senior, you know, and it's, it's still so weird, I can't believe it's happening. So, you know, so we'll just start it. Fall sports are in full swing, they have been for a while. I know my sister has a volleyball practice at like 5:30 in the morning tomorrow. The football team had a scrimmage last Friday, Team White won, so that was great. Today, we had a dance clinic for the musical auditions. The musical is by Baby Birdie. Auditions start tomorrow, so that's very exciting. And I think the biggest thing is, there's such a, like a very warm energy in the senior class, that's what I felt. If anyone like had issues with each other or, you know, any, really anything, it's all kind of, you know, out the window, and everyone's really embracing each other and really enjoying their time together, because we're really not going to see very many people after we leave. So I'm excited, it's going to be really good here. That's it.
I'm Tara from Libertyville. Our first year school was so much fun, the senior class came in, and I, and the rest of the school just came in so excited, really excited to learn, and there's a bond within the senior class that I didn't, I knew what happened, but I didn't expect it to be so fast. And it's just so fun that the seniors and, like she was saying, I feel like there's a warm energy. Kids are always asking where they can go, freshmen are confused, and we're really helpful. We have our first football game this Friday against Palatine, and I know everyone is really, really excited about that, and fall sports are ongoing. The musical this year is Smidler on the Roof, and try out there tomorrow, and everyone's super excited. I have the opportunity to be in student ambassadors, so I meet with the new students during the summer, and I met up with some of them the last Friday, and I said, "How are you liking Libertyville?" And they just said, "It's so amazing, it's so different than my other school." And I really do think that there is a difference between our communities and other schools. So, yeah, I think everyone's just really excited and has a really optimistic view on the school year.
Do you think you could teach transfer students? There's a lot. I had in the past couple of years, and you had your work for this.
Good. Okay, thank you very much, you're welcome. All right, now superintendent's report.
Well, and we are going to have the opportunity to have lunch together once a month, Dr. Swick and Dr. Scott and Dr. Gruddy, most of the time, and occasionally one of the other board members. That's something that we all look forward to as well, having the opportunity to get to know all of you and hear your perspective on things. So it'll be exciting to start that in September, so yes, absolutely welcome. Well, the first thing on the superintendent's report tonight is good news, and even though we just started school, there is always good news in 128. LHS students Cameron Chin and Tyler Chin received first and second place honors respectively in their age groups in Metro's seventh annual safety poster contest. As a first place winner, Cameron won an iPad. He also won the People's Choice Award and received an additional $250 for that distinction. Tyler received $250 for his second place honor. The contest is designed to promote and reinforce railroad safety messages and keep children safe around trains. Hundreds of students from across the six-county Chicago region participated by creating artwork or writing essays around the theme, "Take care, be aware, look, listen, and live." The first place poster designs will be printed and distributed to more than 2,000 schools in northeast Illinois. The posters will also be featured in station displays and Metro's 2014 safety calendar on monthly tickets and on the Metro website. The second and third place posters will also be featured on the contest's Facebook page. So, great job to Cameron and Tyler. VHHS senior Danielle Raditsky is now the third, yes, third member of the VHHS class of 2014 who earned a 36 on his ACT test. I think that deserves a round of applause. The VHHS boys soccer program ran the 5K Rally for Autism Race. The eighth annual event took place on August 17th at Independence Grove. In addition to supporting a great cause, the team also had impressive finishes by team member Chris White and assistant coach Corey Smith. Last spring, SEDOL employee Karen Martin, who works at VHHS, was named the SEDOL May 2013 Employee of the Month. On Wednesday, August 28th, Karen will be recognized by the SEDOL governing board as the SEDOL Employee of the Year. She has been with SEDOL for 15 years, so congratulations to Karen, that's just absolutely outstanding. Also tonight, the superintendent's report, I'm happy to let the board know that we are certifying this evening that our staff in District 128 has met all five performance recognition bonus criteria this year to earn a 1.5 non-recurring, non-compounding bonus, which will be paid in one check on the last pay date in November prior to the holiday season. It's an outstanding accomplishment by our staff and obviously performance by the students. But just to review for the public again, this is a very innovative way to enhance compensation for staff, but it's based on criteria that are meaningful to our community and our schools with predominantly an academic focus. And the five criteria are the percentage of students taking advanced placement tests, percentage of students earning threes, fours, and fives, ACT composite, pre-state achievement exam, performance, and the numbers of students participating in athletics and soon-to-be student activities. We've been laying a database so we can do year-over-year comparison with that. Last year, the staff made four of the five criteria and earned the bonus, that's the minimum, and this year, they absolutely crushed all five of the categories, so we're very proud of them. And the way that we came to those targets was to take the previous five years' data in each one of those categories and average it. So at the level that our district performs, that is a weighty number to achieve year-over-year. So thank you again to the board for working on that concept with the staff and the work of Ellen, Marina, and their teams and their staffs, and certainly the students for achieving those criteria. It's really, really exciting, so good work to everyone. I will be back in September, and we will make a recommendation that you authorize the payment of that bonus in November. So we'll have one more meeting where we're talking about this, and then Yasmin will cut the checks in November, so congratulations to everyone. One of the other things we have on the agenda tonight that we'll ask you to vote on, we made a recommendation at the P and P Committee last week that we electronically post our board agenda and supporting documents that are not confidential. As the board is aware, and the public may not be, but any of those documents that are referenced at a board meeting, unless they're protected by confidentiality, are available to any member of the public that attends that board meeting. So as the board has worked over the last several years to become more and more transparent, that's been a priority of our board and administration, we're making a recommendation that we now post those documents along with our board docs on our public website so anyone can see those documents at any time before the meeting. And we talked about that at the committee meeting, and so I'm making the recommendation on behalf of the administration tonight that we do post our electronic board agenda supporting documents along with our agenda on our website, our electronic domains. So we would be looking for...
I make a motion. I make a motion that we electronically post the board agenda and the supporting documents that go with.
Any discussion?
Just to clarify, the board agenda's all ready.
Right, right.
It's really just the incremental supporting documents. And one question, is this retrievable via the app? I haven't done it that way, so I don't know.
The board docs?
In a roundabout way, it is, but we can make it.
I'm just curious, I mean, make it easy. Okay, all right. Certainly on the web, it's all, okay. Was there another question or comment?
Long time comment. Glad that we're there.
Okay, roll call, please.
I.
Batson.
Hi.
Kelly Collie.
Hi.
Currie.
Aye.
Lunsford.
Aye.
Maurer.
Aye.
All right, motion carries.
Okay, and the last thing under other tonight, the board has often heard the administration talk about the number of bills that are passed in Springfield regarding public education. I'm going to pass out tonight a document that lists 103 bills that were passed last year regarding public education. Many, every one of those bills requires us to do something, and many of those bills do not provide funding to do those things that we may need to do, including time spent on some of, on some of the issues. Some of the other ones are more perfunctory, they're corrections or additions to earlier bills. But I wanted the board to kind of see and feel the weight of those bills as you hear us continually talk about unfunded mandates, and I really appreciated Representative Centi's comments earlier in the summer when she indicated that she had heard the superintendent say locally that she should not vote for any bill that does not have a funding source with it. So one down and several to go, I think, in Springfield. So I will, I will just pass those around, and with that, Pat, the superintendent's report is concluded.
Okay, thank you. Next, consent vote agenda, which was reviewed in committee two weeks ago, so if I could ask for a motion to approve the consent vote agenda, please?
Oh, it's fully done.
Oh, yeah, my mistake, geez, I'm sorry. Seeing nobody, anybody from the public who would like to speak? Okay, seeing them, now consent vote agenda. How long do we approve the consent vote agenda? Second, is there a second? All right, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Batson.
Aye.
Kelly Collie.
Aye.
Currie.
Aye.
Lunsford.
Aye.
Maurer.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Program and Personnel Committee Chairperson Maurer.
Okay, we just have one item, and that's the employment of employees. So we need a motion to approve the employment of employees as listed.
So who?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call, please.
Kelly Collie.
Aye.
Currie.
Aye.
Lunsford.
Aye.
Maurer.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
All right, motion carries.
And that concludes the report.
Facilities and finance committee, Chairperson Batson.
Yes, we have the one item that was discussed earlier, the budget for the, approval for the budget for the 2013, 2014 fiscal year. We had our public hearing on August 12th, and as Dr. Gruddy has mentioned, we had quite a bit of discussion on this over the last number of months and continue to do so. So it's, we have the budget presented for approval.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the budget? For who? Second.
Second.
All right, any discussion? I think we've discussed this a lot. Okay, roll call, please.
Currie.
Aye.
Lunsford.
Aye.
Maurer.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Kelly Collie.
Aye. Okay, motion carries.
Yasmin, do we need to do anything for certification of revenues and anticipation of budget, or is that covered on? is that covered under the approval of the budget?
So, that concludes the...
All right, thank you. Property Committee Chairperson Arthur.
Even though we did not have a meeting in August, we plan to have one in September, probably late in September to review some long-range plans for each of the properties. So, hopefully folks will attend.
Okay, good. And is that it? Is that it?
That's it.
Okay. Nothing from SEDOL?
I said it, but I actually forgot. I got invitation to a golf outing, it's for the SEDOL Foundation which takes place soon after we just cover our... Also, I am not gonna be returning this week and anybody would like to go because for alternate reasons.
When did you go?
Yeah, I think especially...
She can go there. Okay, is that it? All right, thank you. Illinois Association of School Boards, nothing and I believe that's it. Okay. Motion to the juror.
Move to Karen. Second.
On the favor.
Aye.
All right, thanks everybody, good night.